Still hoping to get into the fight. His father Daniel, common judge. Save your breath, son. I'm a country great service. I know you want to help, Father, but perhaps it would be best if we take care of our own first. Don't the buttons zip camera roll?
Just be careful, right?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you, Scott.
What'd you say?
I said, can you hear me? Huh? What?
No, I can't.
Oh, good. Then you can't see the mess behind me either.
Who's looking?
Who knows? Oh, did you bring me that paperwork that's out there on the counter? Right beside the basket, my basket. Morning, Dick.
Good afternoon or evening.
Depends on when you did it.
Very true. Good evening, Nancy.
Good evening. How you doing?
Doing well. How are you?
Have you unpacked anything yet?
Uh, we have, uh, some of it unpacked, most in boxes. We have sheet rock. We have one more sheet rock.
Hey, that's an improvement.
Pretty exciting.
Good.
Hi, Frank.
Good evening, Dick. Do you have water?
Uh, we have water. It's got a little bit of iron in it, or maybe it has a lot of iron in it, but we have water.
And you have heat.
Uh, we have heat. We have wood heat and we have a reni. So we're, uh, we're maintaining 64 degrees pretty steady.
That's good. I guess you have a down comforter then?
Uh, several. Yeah, the bedroom is not that warm. That's, that's the living space is 64. The bedroom is probably 52, I would guess, probably. We don't put us them all, but I don't want to know.
You're making the rest of us feel like we live in luxury.
It's, uh, it, it beats the heck out of an RV trailer.
Oh, my, yes.
The walls are a little thin on those.
Uh, nonexistent and single pane glass and, uh, yeah, it's not good.
What's your moving date upstairs?
Well, um, I would say February 10th.
Big party?
Uh, probably not.
I built a log cabin one time and I was forced to move in before it was done. When I moved out 12 years later, it still wasn't done.
Yeah. The first house we built ourselves in Jefferson, we started it in 73. And 35 years later, we moved out and it still wasn't done. Owner built homes. Bad idea.
It's like cup of coffee, Elizabeth. I hope that's coffee.
That's, uh, that's, uh, water with iron in it.
Any radon in that?
Uh, we don't know that yet. We just said it. We'll find out soon.
Make sure you check your water for radon too, Dick. We have a quorum.
Oh, yeah.
Did, uh, anyone know if Jay's going to be showing up?
I believe he is. I know Janice won't be here, but I assumed everyone else would be. Dave?
They may be frozen.
Dave may be frozen. Well, he doesn't, he doesn't always show himself. I'm getting the big picture of whomever speaking instead of lots of little pictures. How do I fix that?
In the upper right hand corner of your screen should be something that says view?
Yes.
You want to be on gallery view.
Bravo. Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Hi, folks.
Good evening.
All righty. We're all ready to go, are we?
Yeah.
Oh, Frank.
Got five minutes.
Oh, everybody survived the cold.
We know you did. You're the radiator, right?
Well, I apologize. I pulled my hand away. I was trying to show her how warm my hands were and I go, oh, it's not six feet. Um, socially unacceptable. I apologize.
I didn't even notice. I was thinking about, my husband's also a radiator. Everybody wants to be near him.
Well, it has some advantages and some disadvantages, so.
Is the camp owner gonna be joining us?
I don't know. I'm thinking so. David will know. I noticed there are two attendees.
Well, well, Mr. Cohen, will Mr. Cohen be joining us?
He has to. He's not first, though. Steve Case is first. Did you all have a chance to review the new proposal from, uh, Steve Case?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yes.
I don't know what it means, but I, I read it. I mean, it's not my decision anyway.
Oh, sure it is.
Goes to the lawyer.
Well, it goes first if the planning board doesn't approve it, it doesn't go to the lawyer. You're fir-, you're the first step of approval, but it's, the ball starts right here.
Oh, Frank.
You are so critical, Sandy, and you have no idea.
For God's sakes, don't tell my wife.
Hope everyone also reviewed the application for Mr. Cohen? And the different diagrams and pictures he submitted?
Yeah.
Yes.
Looks good to me.
Yeah, but you're looking at the blank page.
I, I do much better there, Frank. Jay joining us tonight?
Supposed to be here.
I had trouble connecting. I've got a Wi-Fi hookup here with two outlets and one of them keeps turning red, which means it isn't working. So I just. Plugged, plugged.
Voice is a little. My voice is a little scratchy. Did you hear me, Sandy?
Yep, my voice is cracking, so I'll shut up.
Can you guys off the top of your heads? Say alphabetical order of our members? Sandy's first. Scott, Janice. Pardon me?
Not a chance.
But when you introduce yourselves, this, uh, we, we have this problem with Zoom because we want to talk over each other. So perhaps we could go in alphabetical order, which would be Sandy, Scott, Jay would fit in there if he shows up.
You first.
And me first, of course, but I'll introduce myself when I convene the meeting, which is now seven o'clock, and so I shall do that.
Is there gonna be a written test?
So, uh, seven o'clock, and this is the Lincolnville Planning Board meeting on Wednesday, December 30th of 2020. And I am again Elizabeth Udi, and if the other members will introduce themselves real quick.
Sandy Delano of Youngtown Road.
Scott Harrison, Lincolnville Beach.
More fleet alternate.
Dick from Yulin, Hope Road.
Great, thank you. Um, we are conducting this meeting remotely via Zoom, and that recording is available through YouTube as well as, I think you can watch live on channel 22. And I have notes and I have a brain that just makes the notes kind of go away. So I, um, even though we do have a quorum, it is up to me. I can designate Bill as a voting member this evening since uh, one of our members is absent. Janice won't be here tonight.
Mine is to serve.
Great, thank you. Are you doing what? Okay, Nancy?
I, Bill was kind of broken up.
He said he was here to serve.
To serve, okay, no problem.
He accepts it. On the, um, I think Jay had expressed at our site visit that the first thing we needed to do would be to approve the minutes that were created at the site visit. And hopefully you all had a chance to read those. I did get some comments, which I appreciated very much.
Which site visit are we doing? Which site visit are we doing?
The site visit that we did this week. We just need to approve those minutes that I sent out to you.
On the Cohen site visit.
I got you. All right. We've done site visits to both of these places.
Hmm, yes.
I got them to email and they were fine to me.
I got a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor of approving the site visit minutes of December 29th? Thank you very much. Was that the 29th?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, it was just yesterday?
Wow.
So on the agenda to this evening, the first thing is, um, a revised escrow agreement for Harbor Ridge subdivision. Steve Case, owner of the subdivision, will be presenting. And I'll let, I guess I'll let him come on and do his presentation before we go over some of the history and see where it is. I think the only person here tonight that was at the last meeting where it was approved on March 11th is Sandy. Yes, Sandy, you want to ask something?
I was just gonna ask the question, does that make any difference? Is this a new, new, uh, thing that we're dealing with or is it continuation of the previous?
It's an excellent question. It is a revised escrow agreement, but I don't think it's a revision to the approved plan that you all voted upon.
Yeah, that's okay. That's fine.
That's the way I see it, but I'm not sure, you know, without more experience on the board. Go ahead.
I don't have a problem with it. I just had to ask the question.
Frank, do you have input on that?
No, I think Steve's gonna clarify it for you. And what basically the bottom line, what we're doing is he is asking to put all the money upfront instead of partial in order to be able to sell lots ahead of time. And you're the starting spot. Once approved by the planning board, then it'll move up the chain till we get final approval.
All right, I'm sorry. Go back. Final approval for what? For the new revised escrow agreement?
That's correct. You're, you'll be reviewing the escrow agreement for planning board approval, what you see there. And then it would move to the selectman and then up to the town attorney.
I see.
That's what you did the la-, that's the same way you did the last time.
Okay. So even though the planning board approved the overall subdivision plan, all of that goes through those.
This is not the plant, this is.
That's okay. I understand.
Subdivision plan, approving the subdivision plan was just a subdivision and that's the final approval from the board. But with what's being requested here is to have an escrow in reference to the way we handled the black topping of the rope. Okay, and that's the planning board's starting spot to get the final approval on that.
So just for, for me, the new guy, all escrow agreements and guarantees, et cetera, always continue on through these board selectmen? After approval? Okay.
Because, because you're not qualified for legal standing on this. You're looking at it from the planning board's point of view to satisfy the ordinance. Okay, let's, excuse me. I would let Steve now present it for you as, as he's got a, an update to the escrow that he'd like to request.
Welcome, Mr. Case. Go ahead with your, um, presentation.
From my laptop, I got three lights on here in, in my office and, and I can't seem to get any brighter than this. Um, Frank kind of explained it pretty well, actually. The, um, the, uh, original escrow agreement was for the, um, finished coat so we could get the binder down. And so we proceeded on getting the road completed, ready for asphalt, and I had made, um, you know, the contract months, you know, in the summer when I set it up and we were ready for over two months. And because the blacktop guys were busy and, um, actually got to the point where the grader came to the site, the roller came to the site and it was there for a week and then the weather went, phew. I said, I don't want it. It's, it's too cold. I, I don't want to ruin the base. So, uh, while you, we'll see your first thing in the spring, it's like, ah, so here I am. I got two lots sold and I can't close on any of them until we get this agreement together. Uh, cause well Frank would know that, you know, there's a lot involved with getting plans together, septic designs, house designs, foundation, all that stuff and wells. It takes months to get all that. If I have to wait till June or July till the pavement goes down, it's gonna put the whole there house construction, you know, out a year. Cause you only, you know, you try to hit it in the spring and so that's why I'm asking to put, instead of the 25,000, put the whole 70,000 like as if I paid them for it. And, uh, it would be an escrow till, uh, you know, the spring. And then, um, once they put the binder down in the spring, then, uh, they can, you know, relinquish the 45 and still leave the 25 for the finished coat for down the road. According to, you know, the original, uh, setup was for four years. So that's what I'm really looking forward is if I can, if, like Frank said, uh, when we first hit this glitch and I talked to Dave, Kenny about it, I, you know, I wrote him a nice letter and we sent it off and I went to, uh, a select, selectman's meeting and then it kicked back and saying, oh no, planning board has to approve it first. And then we looked at it and that the attorney see it and then it goes from there, just like Frank said, so. So here I am.
Okay.
You, uh, understand it and I, I think it protects, you know, the, the new owners when they buy the land because, you know, the whole money, all the money is in that account, so.
This escrow agreement that I assume you submitted?
Yeah.
And then you used the original escrow agreement as your template for that or did it, was this prepared for?
I had my attorney look at it and she changed the verbiage on it. So, um, that's what I'm showing to you and it'll go to, if you approve it, it goes to the selectman and then they let the town attorney look at it and they tweak it if it needs it and then we'll go from there.
Okay.
So.
Any questions, Frank, members?
Well, uh, to me, it, it sounds like a reasonable agreement in order for him to, you know, solidify his building plans and everything. I don't see that there's anything wrong with approving it and letting it go forward.
In reality, this would make the road better for the subdivision because it originally planned to put down the skim coat, which it's often would have taken a beating while the construction was being done at any house. And he would have moved ahead with that and the write-up, the details, this is the original plan here. It's the exact same wording as the other, except now the amount's on there. So this way here, and I can appreciate his position, you do not put a blacktop down when the weather's cold, the bonding does not take place.
No.
And the road, the, the road fence not to fall apart very rapidly in one to two years. So he's asking is common sense and it's for the benefit of the people that buy into the subdivision. And he's putting the full amount of the skim coat and the finish coat.
And that, that protects the towns. Should anything happen to Mr. Case and not be able to finish this project, the town could finish it because the money is there.
Right.
So.
You know, it could be all kinds of crazy things could happen. These people buy the lots, they're starting to do their construction and I get in a car accident or something weird and, and I'm out of the picture, let's say. Then they say, well, who's gonna take care of that? And the time, and Frank's gonna say, no problem.
Right.
You know, it's all ready to go. Grader comes in, they do a final grade and they roll it and they put the, put the pavement down.
Sandy?
Can I simplify this? When I make a motion to approve it?
I'll second.
All in favor of approving Mr. Case's escrow agreement, the revised for the 70,000? There we go. Nancy?
Steve, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, uh, I hope everybody had a nice Christmas and I hope you have a, we're, we're going for a great New Year's, hopefully.
Happy New Year. Bye-bye.
It's gonna get better.
Thank you.
Frank, you're awfully broken up.
Yeah, you are.
I'm breaking, I'm breaking up.
Yeah, you're breaking up a little bit.
It's probably the wife I can actually get here. Okay. Is it better if I talk louder?
No.
I'll try softer then.
Uh, Frank, am I still on?
Yes.
So from here, you, you get in touch with Dave and, uh, send the paperwork to him?
Yes.
And then it goes.
Pass it on tomorrow, Steve.
Town attorney and he'll get back to me then.
Exactly.
Thanks.
I'll talk tomorrow, Steve.
Yeah.
Good luck.
Good night, all.
Good night.
Thank you.
Bye.
Okay, guys. Next on the agenda, shoreline zoning application, review of previously approved addition to a cabin located at 173 Mariners Drive. Map to lot six and the owner, instead of performing the additional, uh, the addition, um, demolish the cabin. Alex Cohen, who is the owner, will be presenting. Uh, we already approved the minutes from the site visit. Are we ready for Mr. Cohen or do, do we get to talk and discuss? We let this, is Mr. Cohen here, David?
Has to be here.
Okay.
He is and I'll bring him right over.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Can everybody see me?
Yes.
Yes.
You hear me?
Yes. Welcome.
Thanks. Do you want me to start or, uh, does Frank introduce me?
Uh, Frank can introduce you. Now who's Jeremy?
Jeremy's manager.
He's a contractor.
Okay, great.
I'll bet what you're, what the board is dealing with is back in 2016 when this started off, Mr. Cohen took out a building bid and he made a request to have a specific building built. And that was approved by a planning board. Uh, that permit was expiring. He took out renewal on the same permit. And that's, you know, we get one renewal. And so in 2018, that particular permit expired. And so there was no grandfathering involved. At that point in time, the board is in charge to take a look at the application submitted to be the same building as was approved in 2016. However, it now falls under the, the new shoreline zoning laws it contains. And we said the 2015 shoreline zoning or back in 2019, 18. So the board would be looking at the ordinance as it exists today, not what it was when it was approved back in 2016. That's it.
Okay. I'm a little confused. So if I can just go over the timeline, the way I brought it up. I see that in 2016, the shed, the playhouse slash studio was erected. In 2018 was the first application for renovation and expansion under the 30% rule. That expired and Frank, one of the, the next application is dated 2020 April, which was be your extension, correct? And that's only good for 180 days? Does that sound right?
I understood it to be a year.
Okay.
It is, it is a year.
It is a year. So the application that I have that has a date of 20, of April of 2020. I assumed that was an application for an extension, but that never came before the board. Is that correct?
I'm, I'm looking at a date on one of these diagrams of the original approval was, uh, 2017.
So.
Before the board, Elizabeth, if nothing had changed to, to make it just a continuation of the original approval.
Okay.
But I have the plans I had were from 2016 for the house.
That's, that's my, my first, my first permit date was 2018. So, and then I renewed it this spring in 2020. And I had a two, I was interested at a two-year timeframe for the first permit. So I renewed it in, in May of, uh, May of this year.
Yeah, this application has, um, April 23rd of 2020. Uh, this is the one that you, uh, Mr. Cohen had signed on May 15th of 20.
Okay, okay.
And a fee of $86. So was, that's where I'm a little confused. Is that also expired? And did, was that, did that go before the board? I don't find it on any agenda or any minutes.
It would not have gone before the board if it was a continuum of the original one that was submitted. I, I didn't have it as, I didn't have it as starting on 2018 though.
Uh, the original, where did that go?
The original one you're looking at, what's that dated Elizabeth?
Um, where'd my original one go? Shoot, I took them all apart. Silly me. It was dated for something and then it was approved on 4/25 of 18.
And what?
Oh, it was dated for 18 and, um, Mr. Cohen signed it on 5/15 of 18.
What is the, this, what is the description on the, on the left-hand side of what the project was?
In 2018, it is add and/or reinforce foundation beams and posts, renovate interior and add dormers to second floor.
Now was that, was that the original date?
That's the original. He wrote the very same thing on the one dated 5/15 of 20. But although they're the same thing, they are written at two different times.
In that case, then he is grandfathered.
My understanding was I was renewing my permit for another year.
When you came in in April of this year of 20.
That was my, exactly.
Okay. So, so then that he is grandfathered then therefore under the old ordinance right up till the, to May of 2021.
Okay. So that changes everything.
Does.
We still have the violation.
Yes, you do have a violation.
Violations. One violation is having demolished the existing structure without a permit. And is the other violation having continued, um, construction after a stop order, stop work order. Is that right?
That's correct. So at this point in time, uh, hold due ballgame where the building was demolished.
So we can't modify it. So, so the original approval is, as I see it, is null and void. Because it was to modify an existing structure which no longer exists. Is that correct?
Perhaps. Mr. Cohen, go ahead. You had a question.
Well, I, I, I was unaware. I, when, when Frank shut it down two weeks ago, all we did was put the silt fence in as he instructed us to do. So we stopped working on the site. So I don't know.
Alex, you did not have the cement columns in at the time, the cement columns you put in after the stop work order. I was there when they were digging the holes for them, Alex.
That's not true, Frank. They were there already. They were essentially completed. Like they're not, the back ones are, were already in, the front ones were not. Believe me, believe me, I, I mean, I mean, you, I, I don't want to make this any more of a mess than it already is. So, um, believe me, well, I mean, I guess you can't believe me, but I'm not going to mess with this because the, you know, the contractor was told to, to get off the site and to put the, uh, shoreline stabilization, um, silt fence in, which happened later that day and the Friday or the Saturday, whenever, the next day after. Nothing, nothing changed from when you said to stop. So I guess I, I don't know how to prove that to you, but I, it stopped.
Then we'll go back to what, let's move back to what Sandy was saying then about what we're dealing with with the status. You tore the building down, it's a new ballgame. It affects the grandfathering.
That's the decision you guys have to make.
I guess, you know, of course, my whole approach to this camp has been a long process. I've had this, this permit. You know, construction's complicated, it takes time, takes money. I finally sort of put it together. And, and frankly, the structure was, you know, the roof had to go, the front deck was rotted. So it was sort of time, you know, nothing was really worth fixing at this point. I could go into a long explanation of how it all happened and why we're here now. I take responsibility. I, I didn't intend to do this. I could have applied for a demo permit and done this differently. I mean, it wasn't like, I didn't have the time to do it. I, I had the time to do it. The project was never, it was unclear, you know, how, how poor the structure was until you get into it. And then once the roof comes off and the chimney comes down and the floor is damaged, there's not a lot left. I wasn't in town. It's not an excuse. Jeremy was involved, but not yet really because this, this other guy was doing the, you know, the ripping and the tearing. So there was, you know, a number of things, mistakes that culminated in this situation. But there's, if, if I thought I couldn't build the, the same structure that I had permitted, I mean, that, that, you know, like that, that would be sort of catastrophic for me. Um.
Alex, the position you put the planning board in is that when you tore that building down, you went in total violation of what was approved by the planning board and you started a whole new ballgame with that. It doesn't matter what the reasons were. If you were going to tear it down, you had to come back before the planning board for a demolition approval, which would have changed the whole picture, which is even more so now. You're putting the planning board in a position that they, doesn't matter why you did it, you did it. Now, would they have to decide how they're going to, go ahead with this project now?
I, I understand I did something wrong and if I could do it differently, I would if, if, believe me. I, I guess I'm just sort of of the position and, and I, you know, I hope that the belief that I did not stop working is tainting this board's opinion of me because it's completely inaccurate. Um, so you know, I hope I can somehow convey that to you. The, the, the project, I was, I was out of town for about two weeks from before the project started. It took about two weeks to, until the stop work order came. We started on a Monday, I think. And I think it was a Thursday or Fri- I think it was a Friday morning that, 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 of, of, you know, two weeks later, two, two full calendar weeks. So you know, there, there was, this was not like something I was trying to like do under the cover of darkness or something. I, you know, it was just a typical project going along and it just, it just kind of fell apart. Um, so you know, I, you know, I, I had this plan. It's a small little cabin. It was, you know, it was a small cabin. I wanted to just add a second floor to it in the same footprint. That's all I've ever had. And to make it just structurally more sound because it was built in the 50s and just basically a very simple two-by-four style structure on a very small, you know, I have a very small lot, you know, I don't have a lot of room to work with. So that, you know, that's where I'm coming from. Um, I'm not trying to do anything that I wasn't allowed to do or I wasn't, you know, so I, I'm not trying to make it any bigger than what I was approved to do. Um, and it's a small little 22 by 26 cabin to begin with. Um, so it's not, it's not a substantial dwelling. So I, I take responsibility. I just, you know, I, I have a nice plan. It, it's my bedrooms off the main level and it doesn't impact my site significantly because it's the same footprint. Um.
Um, could I, um, so what you're saying is the more of the bad stuff you took down, the more bad stuff you found and had to continue in order to make this, the structure safe and it culminated in the entire cabin being taken down.
Well, yeah, there was, the front sill was rotted, but once, once the roof, because I was adding, you know, dormers on the second floor and once you tear the roof down and then you take the chimney down or collapses down and it's a, it's a very basic structure to begin with, you don't have a lot left at that point. Ultimately, um, you know, you have got, you know, three or four walls and a platform, but it's, it's not a significant structure per se, but, um, yeah, I mean, I mean, you know, yeah, I mean, there, once, once the chimney came down, you know, there's not a lot left below. And the front sill was rotted and the posts were just, just not significant, significant structural posts.
So those of you familiar with the ordinances, I have to ask, how would, um, we have a lot of things to consider obviously, but 12C4 reconstruction and replacement. How would that apply in this case, even though the, uh, destruction removal of the building was a violation, um, does that apply? And Jay is listening, so maybe he'll, apparently he can't get on, but he is, uh, he's watching. So does anybody have a comment about that or where do you want to go with this discussion?
My two cents is we don't have a building to reconstruct, which leads to a whole new ballgame. New ballgame says we have to apply for, and correct me if I'm wrong, a permit to construct the facility that you've outlined here on that property.
Is it, is it likely that DEP is going to have some, uh, input at this at some point and, uh, might they raise the question of what's all this new structure doing, uh, within about 10 feet of the water?
Well, there's more, well, first off, new structure cannot go within 10 feet of the water. If I read it correctly. It has to be what 75 feet or 100, 100 feet back. You ha- have to have a minimum frontage of, what is it? 160 feet frontage?
Well, it's a non-conforming lot. That won't change. And as a non-conforming lot, he can still go to 100 feet. Um.
So you can go to 100 feet. We don't have to worry about the frontage. All right.
Right.
But the bottom line is he has to, he cannot construct on the current footprint.
Agreed.
David, um, did you see the note from Jay? He's requesting another, uh, invitation into the meeting.
It's okay, come here.
Okay.
I mean, my, my understanding of the, of the process, because you know, when I first applied and, you know, you have to move the structure back to the most reasonable distance, if you have distance to move it to. In my case, my cabin was located where it was really close to the water, of course, because it was built in the 50s. And then my septic field is behind that. And then I've got my parking lot and driveway. Um, so my lot's small to begin with and then I've got all those other things. So there's just physically no other place to put it. And my primary reason for just, I'm keeping the same footprint is I don't have any space. I just wanted to go, I just wanted to go up to get, you know, just to add a second floor, just to get enough height to get a second floor, same footprint. So that was the, I mean, that's, that was my logic. I'm not trying to take my lot and do something crazy to it. I'm simply trying to get, trying to make my cabin better, um, ultimately. Make it last another 50 years, um, and get my bedrooms out of the first floor. That's, I made a mistake. I screwed up. I'm stressed out. I'm really stressed out.
I'm sure you are. I'm sure you are.
I, you know, if I thought, you know, I mean, if I intended to, to have this happen, I mean, it, it, that's crazy because all I've wanted to do is build this cabin for two years. You know, I've not wanted to do anything wrong. I've just wanted to sort of get my builder, get my money and just sort of pull the trigger, which I did, but here we are. So, you know, I'm sort of like, I, I'd like to just impress upon you that I'm not trying to do anything that a normal homeowner wouldn't want to do on their lot and improve their property. I tried to follow the rules. I got my permit. I got, I renewed it. I, you know, things fell apart. I understand and I screwed up and maybe some, some other people screwed up on my team on some level, but I'm the guy that got the permit and I'm the owner, all that. And I, you know, so I, I take responsibility. So I guess I'm, I'm just, I'll do whatever I can, but I, I, in, in a simple form, I just want to do what I had a permit to do. I know I'm sort of doing it backwards. And perhaps it's going to, you know, you know, I should be punished somehow for not doing it the right way, but the ultimate end result will be the same thing that I had the permit for. I guess the difference technically, it would have, instead of a concrete donut on grade, it would have a more substantial concrete pier in the ground, which is frost proof and more stable and a better, a better foundation material.
Alex, please, please understand, we are not here trying to punish you.
I know.
We are given some rules that we need to adhere to.
I understand.
And, uh, we cannot deviate from those one way or the other. And the rules basically are you cannot put a new structure on the footprint that you have.
And we have some discussing to do obviously, um, and I'm not saying Sandy that you're not absolutely correct. That's why I was asking about 12C4, which does say that, um, a structure, destruction removal may be reconstructed or replaced provided that a permit removal, which we did not have, um, may be reconstructed or replaced provided, well, let's see, within 18 months of the date. Um, such reconstruction or replacement is in compliance with the water body requirement to the greatest practical extent.
That's not the scenario you had Elizabeth. You did not have that. Is Jay, is Jay able to get on?
Uh, they're working on it. If reconstruct is less than, you know.
That's, that's if a permit had been requested to demolish the building. This is not.
And Mr. Cohen, we looked at your property and, um, I know it's not the direction you want to go, but you could build just about anything you wanted at the 100-foot mark, which is where your little studio is. Um, and obviously we, we observed that that is movable, but again, we just need to have some more discussion and figure out what needs to be done. And I, I have a question, I guess for Frank, if, if he were to rebuild at the 100-foot mark. If he were to rebuild at the hundred foot mark. What happens to the piers and the, um, anti-erosion?
They should be removed.
Site's gotta be reclaimed.
Like, you have, you have to reclaim the area as Sandy just said.
Mm-hmm. I think that was Bill.
Could use those piers on the other ways.
I'm sorry, Scott, what'd you say?
The, the good part is he could use those, um, if he, you know, chose to build at the hundred foot mark.
Yes.
So he's not losing them.
Right.
There, there seems to be difficulty in, in this committee saying that. What's going on is in compliance with the ordinance. Because it's not, and that's the limit, it seems, of our. Input into the, into the processes and i- is there an option for the, for the applicant to? Uh, seek a, a variance?
I think there would be, um, because it's a non-compliant lot.
Variance, it's, it's the, it's the.
Board of Appeals.
The, the only thing about that, Elizabeth. A, an appeals board can only render a, a recommendation. And that would deal mainly with home rule codes. The appeals board can no longer change codes that are coming from the state. All it could do if it was a, a home rule, then they could pass it on to the select board, the select board. But, but this is a state law that we're talking about. The ordinance is right to the state law.
So. Twelve E one on non-conforming lots. A non-conforming lot of record, um, let's see, provides such a separate ownership. And all provisions of the ordinance except lot area, lot width, shore frontage can be met. Variances relating to setback or other requirements not involving lot area. Lot width or shore frontage shall be obtained by action of the Board of Appeals. So is this, this does not apply in this case? If, if we were to say he has to build at the hundred foot mark, can he go to the Board of Appeals for a variance?
If it was a non-conforming lot, a new lot, he'd have to be able to make setback with the septic and setback from the water.
So the fact that it's a non-conforming lot, but already has structures on it, this does not apply? That's only for a new lot.
This is definitely.
Okay, thank you.
Could I just raise one? Um, in your packet, I have my. My, my site diagram. When I've talked about this project in the past. You know, I, I just don't think there's another place to put the house. If you look at that diagram, the septic and where the property is. You know, if you just look at the footprint of the house or, you know, a twenty by twenty-six structure. I don't think there's physically room, if you look at that diagram that's in your packet. I don't know if you see that there, but.
Yeah.
Just diagram. I don't know if that.
Well, I think we're, we're not necessarily into designing your new home for you.
We need to, um. We need some help. Come on, guys. So is this the diagram you were showing?
No, there's, there's one that's, uh, it's got Michael Cummins on the top. It's.
Yes, that one was done in. Twenty thirteen.
That gives you a schematic of, of the lot, but. Of what's there.
I know it's disappointing and I'm not saying we're, I'm ruling this, I'm not, that's not my place. But our observation, except for the fact that the driveway is there, was that you could fit the existing footprint. Where your shed is now, the playhouse shed.
Can't fit the parking lot and the house.
No, well.
Well, yeah. He could, he could take and mitigate the parking lot space, but the house there. I mean, the space is already impervious at this point, so there's not a problem with that.
It's not my lot, though. I don't own it, you know, so like. I, the, the four corners there.
I was gonna ask about that. On all of these, it shows that your lot is a hundred by hundred. But the hundred foot mark ends about where your little shed begins. On this diagram, uh, dated twenty fourteen. Is a hundred mark, a hundred foot mark goes to the front of the playhouse studio shed. Do you own the driveway?
Yeah, I think I do. Yeah.
Okay.
It, it's not depicted on that plan, but it's a camp lot. They have obviously lots of. Idiosyncrasies. It's, you know, it's, everybody's hemmed in.
Obviously, we're trying to help you. Uh, with our two cents worth of what you might do with the property, but the bottom line is we cannot approve. In my opinion, uh, building on the, on the previous site where the building was. Just given the nature of the rules we have to abide by.
How potentially mobile is the small existing house or, or, or shed?
Very. It's a, a shed city shed and it's just on, um, sli- uh, what do you call them? Skids?
Oh.
Yes.
Uh, is, is that a potential building site for?
It, it is in our opinion from our visit yesterday, but obviously that's not what Mr. Cohen would prefer.
I mean.
Trying to go through options.
I know. I mean, I, I, I had, I had, I had a cabin on the site. There was a cabin there, obviously. It, it had been there since the fifties. Um, I had a permit to. Raise the roof, add bedrooms, support the foundation. You know, there, if, if I had done this differently, there would be a cabin in that location. As permitted, basically the only difference would be. The posts would be more substantial. They'd still, it'd still be on posts. It wouldn't be a full foundation. I don't want a full foundation. I don't wanna, I want it to be a cabin, a camp. So. Like logically, that just seems. You know, if that would have been what would be there and what my permit allowed for. I am doing it backwards. I'm asking for your understanding, some forgiveness. I'm not a bad guy. I didn't intend this to happen. Um, it's a significant property for me, a significant asset for me. Um, and. Not being able to do the project would be. An undue burden that would be. Catastrophic for me. I mean, I don't know how else to put it. You know, I mean.
If I may, just, and this isn't gonna help the way you feel. But in my mind, the whole point of non-compliance laws is these places are there for fifty years or more. They're non-compliant. They're going to deteriorate. And eventually, they're going to have to be turned down, I mean, torn down. They don't get to go back. We don't want to add to the non-compliance. So what you're describing is you might have been able to add a second floor to a building that maybe wasn't going to support that. And that's where we have to be thinking is not keep making more non-compliant. Uh, buildings, especially now that you've torn it down.
Well, I mean, it was non-compliant. Um, in terms of a setback, but I mean, the structure was a typical camp like any other camp. I was wanting to make it more substantial in terms of ruggedness. Um, I could have. I could have kept it on the posts, uh, with the donuts, which is a very sort of simple. Foundation element, but you know, it can shift in the frost. So I, I guess my, my, my response is, you know, I'm not asking to. To do something that wasn't already approved at this location and. It's not unlike many other camps on Norton Pond. Depending, you know, they're all close to the water. So. It would feel like a severe. Penalization to, to somehow not be able to use that site. I know. You know, given my limited lot area and everything else that's in there. Um, you know, my septic tanks down there already. I mean, it's like the, the septic takes up most of the lot that's usable. I mean, I have my couple dwellings. There's a little creek there, a little drainage. You know, I, I don't have a lot of space to work with. I mean, it just. You know, that, that is where it's always been and my, my design is really. You know, it's the same sort of structure. It just has a second floor and a dormer. I mean, I, I. I guess just logically, it just seems like, is there a creative way that? This project can be. Considered, um, because I had a permit that was approved, I did not go about it the right way, but ultimately. You know, what was there was okay and what was approved was okay. Um. What I'm gonna build is more, I mean, it'll just be, it'll be better. It'll be, you know, it'll be. It'll be off the ground. It'll be out of the floodplain. It'll, you know, it'll just be a better building, you know? As, as opposed to what it was. And it's still just a small building, twenty-two by twenty-six.
A suggestion, uh, what, what if the. Planning board was to request that the applicant take and have a surveyor. Lay out on a surveyed plan showing where that building could possibly be located on the lot. There's no setback required from the road. And, uh, that way there you have a target because right now he's just chipping back and forth. You at least have, you know, make a plan and make the recommendation where it can go and where it can't go. That'll give you something to work.
David, are we having any luck getting Jay on? He's, uh. Says he definitely needs to be in on this meeting.
And, and just to be, uh, just to be clear, what, what we'd be doing in the, in, in, in the scenario that you just described is, is. We would be attempting to have a new structure that complies with current regulations on that site.
Correct.
Okay. We can certainly do that.
But has to have an application in place with a plan that we can work from.
I, I sort of. Maybe, I guess I thought that's what I was doing with. All the paperwork. Which is this, which is the same, everything is the same as the original plan. So that's. Nothing's changing.
Alex, I have to disagree. It has changed. Building is gone. That is not no longer a part of your plan. I'm sorry, I don't. Be a bearer of bad news, but. The thing you have the permit for is to build, rebuild and reconstruct an existing building that no longer exists.
To renovate an existing building.
Jay, how are you?
Jay is on and he's talking about. Two C four as well. Alright, Jay.
Supposed to be.
Yes.
Um. Well, let's, let's start officially. Um, Mr. Cohen, um, I'm an alternate on the planning board. My name is Jay Foster. Um, I've been monitoring this whole situation all the way along. I don't know at the beginning whether Elizabeth designated, uh.
Bill is, has been designated as a voting member, yes.
So I am just an alternate, uh, but the bylaws of the planning board allow alternates to attend meetings and all those also participate. Uh, I just have not, didn't receive an invitation to the meeting and haven't been able to participate to this point, but I have been monitoring. So I would ask permission to the board to, uh, be able to speak, uh, and input into the meeting.
So granted.
Okay. Can I ask a question of Jeremy?
There we go. Go ahead, Jay.
On the application, you're the designated contractor for this, um, um, effort. Um, was there any consultation between you and Mr. Cohen about what, what work was done? By the way, I attended the planning board, uh, site walk, so I'm familiar with the site also. Um, did the, did the sidewalk minutes get entered into the record?
Yes, they did. And Jay, were you here for when we went over the, the actual applications and their, um. Chrono- chronological order?
Okay. So Mr. Cohen came to the planning board in two thousand and eighteen and received the permission to do a thirty percent expansion of existing building? And that's not outside the allotted time for the permit extension for the, to run out?
Right. He renewed it in April of this year.
So the application we had before is the renewal?
Yes, the application, um, dated April, I mean, uh, yeah, May of this year.
Right. That's the one that lists Jeremy Howard as the contractor?
Must be.
That was just the new one. The most recent one.
Oh, the most recent one, uh, that we just, just came in and it is not dated. That one.
That, that was, that was my question. So there's been another one that renewed the permit.
There was an extension, uh, extension in the spring of twenty twenty.
So this application has no data on it, request to demolition under proposed use?
Right.
Okay, which had already been done.
Correct.
Okay. Um, my question to Jeremy and to, to Alex is, was there any consultation between the two of you? When the building was demolished and then all the work that was done on the site was accomplished? Did anybody speak about whether or not, uh, shoreline zone ordinances or even the state law? Uh, would pertain to the work that you were about to enter into?
Yeah, that's a good question. Um, so I'm, I'm the builder. Um, but my role is to, to do the carpentry work. Um, not, not as the general contractor. Um, and there was some communication. Um, Alex was gone, um, helping out, um, with some COVID relief. Um, so he asked me to, to be involved, um, and I was on other projects. Um, so it was, it moved very fast. Um, the, the entire project unfortunately moved too, too quickly. Um, um, where decisions were made just due to, um, the winter coming and scheduling issues and. Um, but to answer your question, yes, Alex and I had been talking.
The, the, the question that arises here is not the fact that you were talking about reconstructing a building and tore down a building that existed. And then we're putting it up another building that was already approved as to size. The question is where you were doing it. Where you were doing it was ten feet back from the water in the setback of the shoreline. And that was never discussed that you were tearing down an old building and building a brand new building in that site, on that site?
Uh, no.
Wow. Okay, Elizabeth, I sent a note in, um, earlier. Um, I, I sense that the board, um, is, um, talking about this whole situation, is trying to decide whether. Uh, it can't put the building back where it was. Um, it is talking about where the most practical extent, uh, to move the building further back actually is. And it sounds like you're, um, agreeing somewhat that there is a place to put it. Uh, on the roadside of the septic system, uh, and having been there, I might agree. But as I pointed out in my remark on twelve C four, the twelve C four stipulates that the planning board is the one who determines. What the furthest practical extent is. But it also mentions that the planning board has the authority to appoint a designee to determine the furthest practical extent. Would it be feasible for the board to, um, confer with DEP and get advice from them? On a resolution, um, to this incident?
Absolutely.
I'd like to say I think that's a good idea.
Yeah.
I think DEP is gonna end up in the middle of this anyway, if Maine functions at all like Connecticut does. I think DEP is gonna end up in the middle of this anyway, if Maine functions at all like Connecticut does.
I, I mentioned before to, um, to Elizabeth, because I've been on the, the planning board for 20 years now and we, and we have a history of this kind of thing. Uh, there was a contractor who got permission to do a 30% expansion on a building by the water. Um, and he told his crew to go out and take the part of the roof off that was gonna be expanded and they took the entire roof off plus a few walls. Which devalued the property by more than the 50%, which brought 2C4 into, into being. Uh, that went all the way to the planning, uh, the, uh, the select board with the fine involved and some other business, but there was. No practical way to move it anywhere else but the site that it had been demolished on and it was rebuilt close to that site. This, this is a little bit different because of the location and, and the availability of, of a place to move it back from where it is. There's also a question that came up at the, uh, site walk about whether the peers that are there are actually closer to the water. Than the actual site of the previous building. Since we don't know the site of the previous building. We don't know if those peers are actually closer to the water or not. So any further deliberation by the planning board would have to have the site that the previous building was on. Exactly established. So that we can, uh, determine whether or not any, any portion of the construction that's there now is any closer to the water, which is definitely a no-no under the state law.
I think we move forward with, um, a motion. To involve, uh, DEP in this.
I'll make that motion that we involve the DEP on this in order to get a, a really good idea. Of how he can go forward with his building and, um. And he'll comply as close as possible with the ordinance. Jay, would you say that was a fair estimate?
If the planning board is, is, um, vacillating on exactly what to do, then we have the authority under 12C4 to seek a designee's input on this. Uh, so I think it would help everybody that's on the board trying to deliberate and make this decision. Uh, make it a lot clearer as to what, uh, the resolution could be by state law. Um, it's not a Lincolnville ordinance we're dealing with. It's the state shoreline law and they're the ones that actually enforce that. We'd just be enforcing our, uh, regulations within our ordinance. Um, and we can't do anything more or less than the DEP would do. So their input, I think is important.
I think Frank was making that same point earlier.
So I'll make that motion that we do that.
And do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Dick. So, um, show us, uh, a show of hands, please, for those who believe we should involve the DEP, get their. Input on this and then move forward. So we have everybody but Sandy. Nancy? And Sandy, is there a negative or an abstain?
It's an abstain. I don't believe it's our job to do all that, but.
Well, our attempt to do what we can and to not be in violation of, of the state. Let's see what, where this goes. I'm sorry, Mr. Cohen, we can't give you a little more cheerful news at the moment and. Does that? Is that the end of this discussion for this evening?
I will get in touch with the head of the DEP to see what, uh, Colin Clark can do for us.
Great. And so they go out and do a survey?
Uh, that, that's gonna be up to them. It depends on this, the virus situation right now.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll try to get in touch with them tomorrow.
Okay. And you'll be in contact with Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Okay.
All I need to get back to the board.
Yeah. All right.
Did I, if, if. I don't know how people feel about. When, when I was told to stop work, it stopped and the silt fence was put up. I, I, I was told I. Was, it wasn't necessary for me to go to the site visit, so I didn't go to the site visit, but. I would like to meet with anybody that wants to meet me out there. I'd like to try and. Clarify anything and obviously try and impress upon you that. Nothing else happened after Frank's visit that day, except for the silt fence and all the, uh, hay being put down. So. Uh, you know, I, I don't want, like I said before, I just don't want, there's, you know. There's some characterization of me to be inaccurate based on that information. So I'm happy to meet with anybody out there and. Try and talk about it and I can show you. I know there's still like some deck posts that are still there that, I mean, will show you where the, the building's no closer to the water. It's in the same spot. And. You'll see, you know, there are places where you can see where the old deck posts went into, uh, concrete sort of, um, pads. They're, they're still, they're still there, you know, so.
Mr. Cohen, um, one of the questions that came up at the site visit was what's underneath all the hay?
There's, there are trenches, three, three trenches where the columns were being placed. There's plastic and there's hay.
There's something else under there because there's something going, pointing out towards the water on three or four different places. It was covered by the hay. It looked to be substantial. I don't know what it was, but, uh, it wasn't just a footing for one of the. Um, supports because they were there sticking up out of the hay, but there's something under the hay that's in there on top of the plastic. But you're saying there's nothing else there?
Yeah, I mean, we can go over there. Yeah, I mean. Yeah. Uh, yeah, so I just, you know, I would have, maybe I should have gone to the site visit, but, um, it seems like.
It was really cold and windy.
Yeah, well, well, I, if, if any one of you would like to meet with me, I mean.
We can't do that.
Yeah.
Well, maybe to clarify something that was misunderstood, if, if Frank thinks I didn't stop working, I'd like to. Challenge that somehow or. You know, I, I guess I just don't accept that.
That's all right.
Deal with it.
That's not even an issue at this point, Alex. They're not even looking at that.
Okay, well, I just don't know if it sort of steered things in a direction that.
No, that has nothing, has nothing to do with the direction that the board's gone to.
Not a bit.
No.
Um, I, I will ask the board, however, is, does, does it seem reasonable that we might visit again on a warmer, calmer day? And, um, and look at the site again with Mr. Cohen?
I would recommend that we wait for DEP input on it and then go back with their input and take another look at it if that's necessary.
Okay. And this is all assuming that no more work is going to be done to the, to the site until we get that opportunity. Is that correct?
No work, no more work on the site.
Okay. All right. I guess.
You guys are gonna talk to DEP? I don't do anything at this point?
You do not. And when we have word from them, we'll get back in touch with you. And we'll maybe try to do another site visit at that time.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Very much.
All right, guys. So do we want to talk more about this or do we move on to, um, approving the minutes? Nancy says yes. The, uh, minutes from, that, um, Melissa sent out, I wasn't able to print them. Did anybody get a chance to look at them or do we need to put that off until our next meeting?
I looked at them and they looked fine to me.
I got a copy. I printed and read it. Looks fine to me.
Looked fine to me. I read them on my email.
Okay.
Okay, so I move that we accept those minutes?
I'll second.
All right, everybody in favor of accepting those minutes as presented? Thank you very much. And so do I have a motion to adjourn? Is there any other business?
I just got here.
You just got here? Sorry, you just, you never got the initial invitation? Is that?
Melissa sent something out that said the ID number's on the agenda.
Uh huh.
I did that and I got into the meeting, but I couldn't participate and I never got the invitation to come into the meeting. Usually.
Oh.
Yeah.
Never got that either.
Just getting into Zoom isn't good enough.
Carolina.
Everybody else get the notification an hour before the meeting that it was gonna be?
I've received it twice.
Yeah, I never got that either.
Yeah, I got mine yesterday.
Yeah, I'll have to check on that.
Check your spam folder.
David's trying to tell you something, Jay. Must be. Let me try to get off this. Make a motion to adjourn.
Somebody needs to second. Thank you very much. Everyone that would like to adjourn.
Seconded.
Um, Bill seconded. Thank you. All right, everybody. Thank you very much. Good night.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
It's gotta get, it's gotta be getting better.
Oh, it better.
Oh, God, I hope so.
Good night.
Good night.